Welcome everyone to the April twelfth, two thousand twenty-two City of Broussard Council meeting. Please silence your cell phones and if anyone from our audience would like to make a comment on an item listed on our agenda. Please fill out a blue card located in the back of the room and turn it into our city clerk. Each speaker will be given a maximum of five minutes. Please rise for the pledge.
We, the members of the Broussard City Council, beg of thee, Almighty God, to lighten our minds so that our work will be just and fair in all things. Give us the courage and strength to fulfill our duties according to the laws of the land and fulfilling also thy holy will on earth and in heaven to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Item two point one, acceptance of the minutes of the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
The minutes were supplied in the packet for the council? Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Council discussion?
Question?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item three point one, condemnation of three oh seven East Third Street, McComb property. Do we have a motion to condemn?
I make a motion?
A second. Our presenter tonight is our building inspector, Mr. Rodney Richard. Welcome.
Officer, the owner's here, is the owner of the property here? Yes, sir. Uh, I tried calling you around five thirty and you text me back that you was unable to talk, so I did make it back in time to try to get on the interior. Uh, not sure if y'all have the pictures and stuff?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cooney. We have, we have them in the packet.
Well, back on February the twenty-fourth, I went over there and I took some pictures of it. As you can see, the mobile home was in, uh, in my opinion, very bad condition. I tried to take a picture from underneath the trailer the best I could and the insulation is falling from underneath it. There is particle board material uh, that has come loose, which is typical when you get a lot of moisture into a mobile home. And of course, insulation is gone. There was work done underneath it. I'm looking back at, I wish I could follow you up here. Like right there, that's evidence of work being done on that mobile. When they start drilling holes through the floor joints, that weakens the floor system up. Like electrical panel boxes that's on the, uh, bottom left picture, all that's exposed to the weather. Uh, that's, that's definitely a safety hazard. And that's the picture that I'm talking about right there also. It's hard to tell, but there's insulation. There's also particle board flooring that has fell off from underneath it. Uh, go back again with the other pictures. Uh, up right there. Okay, keep, go back one more. That was the shed that was there that he has removed. That shed, it was mostly just one wall left standing. That's the apartment right here. Uh, from what I understood, there was somebody living in it. I don't know if she's still there or not, but the broken window is still broken this afternoon when I was there. So, by saying all that, I was unable to get into the interior of the mobile home to see the condition of the interior. But by looking at the exterior, when I see the exterior in these conditions, that just gives me a good opinion on what the interior looks like. So, uh, my recommendation to the council is, is to, uh, have it condemned and demolished. And, uh, that's why I'd like him here to hear what he has to say about it.
The building that he says has just a wall has all been torn down. So a lot of work has been done that he hasn't, has not seen. And I really request that you guys not ask me to condemn the thing. If he would look at the inside, the inside is very nice on the inside of it. Uh, and the panel that he indicated on the outside, I believe that's been completely removed. Uh, there was some old, uh, screw-in type fuses inside the building. That panel has been changed to a regular breaker panel. Uh, the floors that he's talking about has all been repaired. Uh, the doors, the windows have been repaired. So there's a lot of things that have been done since the time that he did his inspection, took these pictures. So if you take pictures right now, you would see a lot of stuff has been already corrected.
Mr. Cooney, when was the last time you said you visited the place?
I passed by this afternoon, took a few more pictures. I, I tried calling, but he wasn't available to come and let me on the interior of it. So I was not able to get on the interior this afternoon. Go back a picture or two, uh, if you don't mind. I want to look at these outside, these two boxes right here. You see, that's the two that I was talking about. That's left exposed to the weather. They're using it, I'm assuming as a junction box of some type. That's strictly wrong. Yes, sir. Same condition, right there. It's been.
I'll just mention that this condemnation order was signed by at, at my office on March second, two thousand twenty-two. We are now in April, so there's been ample time to reach out, say again? Over a month for Mr. Cooney to have time to inspect the inside if that was your wish, Mr. McComb. Is today the first time you reached out to Mr. Cooney? Is today the first time you've reached out to Mr. Cooney's office? Is today the first time you've reached out to Mr. Cooney's office?
Well, uh, his office?
Yes, sir, our building inspector.
I called you to try to set up a meeting with you to talk to you and I never got a response from you.
Yes, this is our meeting, the, the, the council.
I wanted to talk to you before this stuff so that we could, uh, at least go through the things that I had been doing and was doing at the time.
Well, but the bill, I, I don't inspect builders. I'm not qualified to do that. I'm a building inspector. Mr. Cooney does work for the city. He does work for the city. He, he is our building inspector.
I didn't know the actual procedures that you guys have.
Mayor, he reached out to me at some point, uh, during the morning, this morning earlier.
Understand, and I, and I understood you were trying to get there to inspect the inside. Mr. McComb, based on the paperwork that, that we have, I mean, Mr. Cooney is making some pretty strong statements about the condition of that trailer. The structure is unfit for human occupancy is in this document. It's, it's right on the first page of his explanation.
I've had several people, sir, that wanted to rent the place and looked at the inside.
He's got a whole paragraph of, about electrical system hazards. So it's Mr. Cooney that would make the judgment and make the report for us on the condition of the building, does it meet standards, et cetera? So that, Mr. Cooney's the one that needs to inspect it fully and looking at the inside. Is something that he can still do? He was trying to do that with you today.
Sure, I would love it to look at the inside. He would see a totally different situation and it is not a condition.
Does it have, uh, running water to it?
Running water?
Yes.
No, I never, uh, connected from the back though.
But someone's living in it.
Yeah.
But someone's living in it right now.
There was a bear that moved into the thing, yes. And I've been trying to get her out. But I have filed with the justice of the peace to get her convicted. It's not a five thousand and one procedure to get her fired. She's always going to be around. So I have to go to the justice of the peace and get her home.
Cause it, it's in bad shape and it's.
I'll, I'll pass by and looked at it today myself. It's, it's in very bad shape.
You said you had somebody looking to, to move into it, but you have no running water. You said you had a potential person to rent to, but you have no running water. You don't have any running water. Okay. So you have a meter, water meter for the trailer? Not turned on apparently. Okay.
I didn't need the water, so I didn't need to turn it on. Is there a second water meter from the kid or the house or apartment from the backside? No, that was a studio that works out. Or back there on the other side. Is that where I understand this lady was living? Was in the back door. Let me get to the point on that, that way. All right. You remember back in January or so, it was about twenty-three degrees. Well, I walked in there and I saw her all coen up. When she throws somebody out, I think, uh, freezing and that. I mean, and I, I told her, look, you need to find another place to live. Well, she resided there and also moved into my trailer. And my trailer door screwed shut. She unscrewed the door. I have tried to get her out. And she may respond to the police department.
Have you reached out to the police department since she was there and shouldn't have been?
Nobody contacted, they got her into disturbance.
No, when you went and she was on your property in your trailer and shouldn't have been there?
No, I did not contact. And this is in doubt for me, it's all alone. What you do is take and watch it in doubt. Um, retired.
Mr. McComb, I, I. So I'll read you an excerpt of an email I got this week from someone that lives near the property. The woman that is primarily living there throws her fecal matter on the ground outside because they have no running water or sewer in the trailer. I understand sympathy for someone who might need some help. Mr. McComb, if you're the owner of the property, you have a responsibility to know what's going on on your property. It is not the people that live around your property's responsibility to live with things like that going on. It is your responsibility. Ben, did you want to make a comment? How long ago was that, Ben? Okay, and I got this email this week, so apparently the problem hasn't been rectified. Mr. McComb, if the council moves to condemn your building, it will give you a window of an opportunity to satisfy Mr. Cooney with repairs. If you do that, if the council votes tonight to condemn the property, it does give you a window of opportunity to make repairs if you choose to do so. But you will have to satisfy the building inspector. At this point, he is the person that makes the determination if it can be brought up to proper code and is inhabitable for a per, for a renter. So Gerald, do you agree with that description?
Yeah, I think that correctly states it. It's just important that Mr. McComb understand that, uh, if he wants to undertake that effort, if he's not successful in completing it to, uh, the building inspector's satisfaction, that's some additional money that's, he's just placing at risk. Just so he understands that.
I would, I would suggest you let Mr. Cooney go inside as early as possible and make sure that he can view it so you understand what he would require you to do. It may be, maybe too much. Mr. Cooney, would you like to comment on that? Tina, would it be possible for the town to turn the water on for one day for Mr. Cooney to do his inspection?
Yeah, it, when, when you head it out there, excuse me, I'll have somebody meet you out there and they can stay with you and make sure if you need to turn it off, we'll turn it off to make sure if there's something leaking. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Tuesday. Yes, sir, Tuesday. Thank you. So Gerald, I'm going to make the suggestion, the suggestion that the council move to condemn if they so choose, which gives the city authority to, after Mr. Cooney inspects. If he cannot be satisfied, then we can proceed. Wh- what would your opinion be?
No, I think that that would be an appropriate move. Uh, you can move to condemn uh, with the understanding that if the building inspector, uh, recommends that we withhold the condemnation uh, because the owner is, has expressed a willingness and appears to be capable of making repairs, sufficient repairs, then, uh, we can hold off on it until the repairs are made.
So we would then wait for Mr. Cooney's recommendation and move forward from there?
Correct.
If, if the council, has the will of the council?
Okay, let's say he, or Cooney finds that he, there's some things that are deficient that need to be repaired. How much time are we going to give him to make the repairs? Is there going to be a timetable, Gerald, that we need to do? I mean, I'm, I'm certain there's going to be some things there that need to be fixed. And what kind of timetable do we give him? To, to, to make those repairs?
Well, it might be better just to table the matter until the next meeting. And if, if, and have another report in the next meeting, if it's done or if it's within uh, a fair timeline of being completed, then you can, you can hold off. Otherwise, you can condemn it then and be done with it.
That's a reasonable opinion, um, but based on Mr. Cooney's report that, you know, it's there to be read, there's very, very little chance that this particular building can be repaired and inhabitable. And I'm just speaking honestly after reading this report. But it is the council's will. If they so choose to have it on the next meeting, it would give Mr. Cooney some time to, um, view the inside and then come back with his next recommendation. Okay.
Now that also goes for all buildings.
Yes, sir. If the council agrees, then we can table it for one meeting to give Mr. Cooney, uh, the ability to inspect the inside. Mr. Cooney is gonna make the recommendation to the council. Correct. So, Mr. McComb, is someone living on the property now? We need to know that before Mr. Cooney enters the building. Okay, just so Mr. Cooney understands Thursday, what, you know, what the condition of the property is, et cetera. So Gerald, uh, based on this, and we would need a motions table for one meeting?
That's correct.
Make a motion to table?
A second.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point one, resolution number seven oh four dash two-two, acceptance of the act of dedication of the streets and our servitudes of Broussard Hills subdivision. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do it. Congressman Garrett, second. Thank you. Uh, Mel, uh, Mel Burshere and our public works directors are presented tonight.
Good evening. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar, Broussard Hills is a, a new development off of Bayou Tortue near the intersection of La Flam Road. Um, they did, uh, su- supply us with the, the packet and, um, we did do a walkthrough inspection. We found a couple of punch list items, nothing that was too terrible. They have rectified everything on the punch list and at this time, I, I suggest that we, uh, recommend, I recommend that we, uh, accept.
Mel, can you remind us of the warranty period, period for, uh, roads that the city accepts?
Upon, um, notice of substantial completion, the one year warranty period starts.
Just remember this, the warranty is between the developer and the contractor. It's not the city's warranty. So it's not, it's a contractual thing that we're not involved in. I, 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 that's as deep as I can go into the law.
No, that's correct. What I think that we need to recognize and the council should recognize is that, uh, once the warranty period is over, uh, we just need to keep in mind that the city then does another inspection of the roadway to make sure it is in the, in, in acceptable condition. And only then does the city's obligation for perpetual maintenance, uh, commence. And I think we ought to make sure that clear in the resolution, uh, uh, that it's subject to the existing regulations of the city, uh, which include the limitations on the obligation of perpetual maintenance.
Thank you for clarifying that, Gerald.
Well, a few, a year or so ago, we upgraded our, uh, lower, low, lowest road standards we had except. Uh, I think we said, you said we would put, we'd require more soil cement? We, we had been actually doing that for a while, but it wasn't, um, it wasn't written down anywhere. We were requiring it and people were doing it because we were asking. What we did was we put it into riding. This is what you gotta do. Because we were having way too many road failures on these new, these new developments.
Uh, do you think that's sufficient, what we, the standards we have now?
Yeah, I think right now, um, we're doing a twelve inch, uh, saw cement base course and two inch, uh, asphalt wearing course. And that seems to be a good, uh, a good number. I'm now.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, yes, it, it, it has been working fine since we've done that.
Then we also added in some things where any open excavation of the road, the actual road bed, they have to backfill with fillcrete or bore. Uh, we were, we were seeing a lot of road failures where they were crossing with sewer services, which is a narrow trench. It's hard to compact. So now we're getting, we're either making them bored or you gotta use fillcrete. They're mostly boring, that, the small stuff.
Yeah, and that, that works beautifully as well. It, it doesn't allow for the failures that we were getting previously with the trenches across the road.
Do we have a call for the question?
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point two, resolution number seven zero five dash two-two, approving the execution of an intergovernmental, intergovernmental agreement with the state of Louisiana DOTD relating to frontage roads along US highway. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move.
Second.
So I can give an explanation, a presentation on this item. Um, the state, uh, DOTD, the state Louisiana recently announced that they were going to improve the overpass, uh, on Highway ninety at the Ambassador Cafrey, uh, intersection. Very good news for Broussard. The state's investing about a hundred and forty million dollars so far is the estimate in that improvement. Then we ran into a problem for Broussard. We, and make sure my, my, uh, statement is correct, Mel. We have a twelve inch water line in the right of, in the state right of way at that intersection. And it's been there for decades, but it is our responsibility to move the water line. So for the last, I would say, six weeks or better, Mel and I have been talking to DOTD. We even took a trip to Baton Rouge just to make sure we flush all this out. We do not want to personally move that water line. We are gonna let it fall under the responsibility of DOTD's project. So we do not have to have, uh, responsibility of a contractor in the middle of a, a bigger project. But we will supply overseeing the inspections to make sure services are what they need to be for our residents and businesses. The current estimate to move that water line, and I'm looking for Daniel, um, there he is, is two point one million dollars, Daniel. So part of the back and forth between DOTD and the city has been, uh, paying for the water line. It is our responsibility to pay for it. They are offering some low interest money if we need to do that as far as the loan goes, but at this point, we are starting to, uh, slow down their project because they need to have their paperwork in place. We have requested, uh, through capital outlay or DOTD capital outlay and through our legislative, uh, our legislative, uh, people in Baton Rouge, that they find us some assistance, some assistance, financial assistance while they are in session this year. Session just began. It has a few months to go. And I'm encouraged by the conversations we're having. Uh, I believe they want to help us. They understand that this is a DOTD project. We're sort of caught in the middle of it, but that is at the point we are at. There is no budget amendment at this point. This is simply an agreement that Broussard has, uh, water line in the way and it's our responsibility to participate in the, in the moving of that water line as I previously described. Um, so it's, uh, being put to the council that, uh, the, the request is that we be able to sign the intergovernmental agreement and continue to work with our legislative body to try to find some assistance one way or another into funding that project. Mel, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think you've pretty much covered it. That's, that's it in a nutshell.
We pretty much don't have a choice here.
We are, uh, yeah, we are obligated by contract, the same way when a, uh, AT&T or any other vendor has a, uh, has a line in our right of way and is their responsibility to move it. We are in, uh, the right of way of a, of a bigger governmental body and we, we do have the responsibility. I'm sure at the time the water line was put there, there was no thought of improving Highway ninety, um, but the day has come.
Right, that, that line was installed approximately nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven. So as you can imagine, it was, the, they weren't seeing this in the, in the near future. And it really wasn't in their future, but here we are. So, and, and it is our responsibility when that, us as well as AT&T, there's a bunch of different utilities that will have to be moved to accommodate this project. So it is our responsibility to move that line out of their right of way. But, uh, I agree with the mayor. We had some conversation with our, our legislative delegation and I'm very encouraged, uh, that they will try to help us in moving forward with this.
And, and Mayor, the way this works, the state will let you cross them or parallel, uh, state right of way and, and occupy it, but it's the same agreement we have with third-party utilities. If we ever need you to move, you have to move. And that, that's kind of where we are today. Correct.
Karen has been sort of working through, uh, if we had to, if we had to do the zero interest loan that they offer, she's been working through the details of that, but it hasn't come to that yet. You know, that'll be something that would come later. The beginning of it is, is we have to be part of their agreement to, to, so they can execute that project. Public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Council discussion or questions?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yeah.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item four point three, resol- resolution number seven oh six dash two two, a resolution authorizing the acceptance, acceptance and dedication of Cedar Street. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mel, again, is our presenter?
Yeah, Cedar Street is, is a little street that was built behind Goodwill off of Main Street. Um, the original construction was, uh, eight or ten years ago. And, uh, for whatever reason, the developer decided to stop at that time, but he decided to revisit it now. And, um, we did require it, back then, the, um, the drainage was installed, uh, some of the curbing, uh, most of the curbing was installed. But we did require them to TV the, uh, drainage, the sewer. Um, and we inspected all the curbing and they did cut saw cement and instead, and lay their asphalt. We did have a couple of, uh, uh, punch list items and they have taken care of those. They have made them, they have, have made it whole. So at this point, I, I do recommend that we, um, accept this road for dedication.
If I may comment, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, when we prepared the resolution for presentation to, to the council, we were under the impression that we would have to draft an act of dedication and get for, for acceptance. And so the resolution reads that the mayor's authorized to accept the dedication upon presentation of an act of dedication in a form and containing the terms and conditions that he finds appropriate. Meaning in accordance with our res- our, our regulations. Since then, uh, it turns out that an act of dedication was actually already executed back in two thousand eighteen, I believe it was, and, or nineteen or something, and this has been kind of dragging out since then. So, uh, I talked to the developer and I talked to his attorney and said that any acceptance would have to be conditioned, once again, on a compliance with the regulations, uh, which would include the limitation of the obligation for perpetual maintenance. Uh, specifically that in a year from now, uh, there will be another inspection of the roadway. And if it is found to be in good condition, then the city will assume the maintenance. So I would think it appropriate to amend the resolution instead of, uh, to accept the act of dedication, which has already been executed, which I've reviewed, but subject to the regulations, uh, limiting the obligation of perpetual maintenance.
Do we have, um, is there any public commenting?
No public comment.
Do we have a motion to accept the revised dedication as described by Gerald, our legal advisor? Amended.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion carries.
An ordinance approving, I'm sorry, ordinance number two two dash seven two three. An ordinance approving and adopting a plan for reappointment of the mu- municipal districts of the city, map four A. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move.
Mister Mike Hefner is here to field any questions that we may have. Um, thirty days ago, we introduced this same ordinance and we made sure that we had a, a good thirty day window for the, for council review. Um, Mike, would you like to comment? Mike, just as a point of clarity, uh, map four A is what's in front of the council. Five has not been introduced, um.
Uh, I know you reconsidered proposal five as well, plan five, but you're proposing plan four A is what you?
Well, Mister Mike, how can you justify flipping six and three just by name? When they're almost the same district, all you did was flip them by name. Well, it's the same argument I brought about the west end of district two, but nothing happened about that.
Was, was there any reason on, on the four project is, I've had any discussions with both Angel and David. And they both have merit in what they wanna do, I understand. But looking at the map, uh, on David's plan, you just have, or, or the, let's say we'll go back to four A, just the, the eight blocks you're talking about are the only blocks that cross over Main Street, which is really David's neighborhood. That's where he grew up. And Angel took over all my district. My home's now in district one. So district five, where I live, is in district one, which I know is gonna be in good hands. She's gonna represent my, my district, uh, real well, but I just think that David's plan, uh, is a continuous, you talk about being homogeneous, is more continuous in his district than it did in district, in Angel's district. That's just my opinion. As I look at the map and, uh, his business is there, his dad's house is there, he's on the other side of Morgan. Well, that, on this side of Morgan should be continuous to his district in my mind. So, that's just my, I'm just, I'm just one vote. That's just my opinion. I mean, we, we can discuss it or we can vote on it. So you, you could live with either plan.
As of now, we only have four A. On?
Yes.
To vote on, correct? Nothing else has been introduced.
I wanna make a motion that we amend, uh, res- uh, ordinance twenty-two, seven, twenty-three and accept map five.
Has everybody looked at map five? That's the question.
Gerald, we have a motion on the table by councilman to introduce a second map for consideration. We will need a second, is that correct?
I think so. I, I think actually he's, he's moving to amend the current ordinance that's before the council, uh, to, to, uh, recognize a different map.
So basically, we either voting on four A or five?
Uh, more or less, that's, well, what you're gonna do is vote whether or not to accept the amend, amend the ordinance to, uh, read map five instead of four A. And if that passes, then you'll have, then you'll vote on the ordinance with reference to map five A. If the amendment fails, then we're back with the ordinance as it is currently introduced, as it has been originally drafted. Yes.
Just to be clear, the amendment would be to change four A to five?
Correct.
Not to have both on the table at the same time?
Correct, to amend the ordinance.
That's important.
Yes.
Okay.
Respectfully to David and all of you guys, um, I have spoken with y'all and I've made my feelings very clear. First and foremost, my constituents come first. Um, I've had them, people reach out to me in order to keep them in my district. They've been in my district for the ten years I'm here and before. So, um, I'm respectfully asking to go with four A. It's your decision, but I'm voting four A.
To all of y'all, y'all still know my point of view, uh, like Angel said, it's up to y'all.
Mister Mayor, just, just comment, uh, uh, the clerk informs me, we, we still don't have a second on the motion.
Correct, and thank you for clarifying what the amendment would mean. Um, it's not to review two maps, it's to replace four A with five.
That's correct.
So we have a motion on the table for the change of maps by Councilman Bone. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. So Gerald, at this time, we would need a call?
You would, you would, uh,
We can continue to be open for discussion, but?
And then when some, when someone calls for the question, you will vote whether or not to accept the amendment.
Okay, we have a, we have a second. But Tina, do you have any public comment at all?
No public comment.
We, we are open to council discussion.
I guess my only concern is thirty days ago, we did four A. We sit here tonight to make a change. And no disrespect to either one of them. Timmy Fox should have been brought up prior to this meeting, not to David two days before. So in my opinion, I look at it this way, we represent the people of the Broussards, the whole city, the district is just an area. And five, eight blocks, both of y'all should represent the eight blocks because y'all both live in the city of Broussard. So my recommendation is to stick with four A and move forward.
So the question is called, and just to be clear, this is a vote to accept five?
To amend the ordinance.
To amend the ordinance.
Yes.
So a no vote goes back to four A, a yes vote goes to map five.
Correct. What's that?
Kenny, Kenny did call for a second. So a no vote, we stay with four A?
Correct.
A yes vote, it's amended to five.
That's correct.
And we have a call for the question by Councilman Bone.
Question.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Nay.
At large?
Nay.
District one?
No.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Nay.
District four?
No.
Motion fail.
Motion fails, so we are back to map four A?
So the ordinance will be voted on as originally authored and, uh, presented.
So we are open for discussion until we have a call for the question.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
Motion carries.
Item five point two, ordinance number two two dash seven two six. An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for the rezoning of seventeen ten Youngsville Highway from light industrial to multifamily residential pending the sale of property. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Motion.
So, uh, this item was introduced at our last meeting or, or a recent meeting. Tonight, we have two gentlemen that represent the buyer of the property. We had a short conversation with them, Gerald and I did before the meeting. Welcome, please state your name for the record. Yes, sir, and, uh, Gerald was involved with that discussion and Gerald, you did not think that that would be an issue if that amendment was way, made such as?
I think the council can certainly consider an amendment to change six months to nine months and then to vote on the ordinance, uh, as amended. So the first step would be for someone to offer, uh, uh, make a motion to amend the ordinance to change the six month period to nine months. If that amendment passes, then you'll vote on the ordinance, uh, as amended, which would include the nine month period.
And as described, it is going to respect the own, the current owner of the property's wishes that the piece of property stays zoned as light industrial until the day of the sale, until the sale is finalized. Uh, and if the sale does not go through, it was, the property will stay as light industrial. Uh, and if the sale does not go through, it will, the property will stay as light industrial. Uh, and he was agreeable to all.
That's correct.
That was his, that was the request.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. So we will need a motion as Gerald described, the amendment to the ordinance.
To amend the ordinance to, to change six months to nine months.
I move as said.
Second.
At large, I'm sorry, district one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
Motion carries.
So now we will need a motion and a second and vote on the amended ordinance, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Tina, is there?
The motion and second, I think is on the table. You just need to, someone will have to ask for the question after further discussion if necessary.
Is there any further discussion or public commenting?
No further discussion or public comment.
Question.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen. Ordinance number two two dash seven two seven. An ordinance amending ordinance number two one dash seven oh three to amend and restate. The adoption of certain option, optional codes for the use by the Broussard Fire Department Fire Prevention Bureau. Do we have a motion to adopt?
I move. Second.
This item was presented at our last council meeting. I see Chief, uh, Champagne. Welcome. Chief is here tonight to field any questions. Uh, but he gave a good presentation of it, uh, at the last meeting. We appreciate that, chief. Tina, do we have any public comment?
No public comments.
Any council discussion or questions?
Question.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, chief. Item five point four, ordinance number two two dash seven two eight. An ordinance accepting the donation of property located at two oh seven and two ten Waterberry Drive. And to execute a conservative servitude with Louisiana Land Trust, AKA Road Home Corporation. Do we have a motion to adopt? Again, this item was introduced at our last meeting. This is, uh, federal money that was given to, to homeowners who were frequent flutters. But as part of that agreement, the city has to accept ownership of the two lots. The homes have been demolished. This is the final step in the, uh, program. Is there any public comment, Tina?
No public comment.
Any council discussion?
Question.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
Yay.
At large?
Yay.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Please have a safe and happy Easter weekend. Meeting adjourned.